You gotta ask the secret code to get them unlocked.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Damn, that's the best thing I've done, I'll tell you.
All right, welcome all. Approval of the bills, everyone have a chance to look at the bills, any questions on the bills?
You ask my questions.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the bills?
Make a motion to approve the bills.
Is there a second?
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried? Mayor's report. Oh, I'm sorry. Approval of the July tenth, twenty twenty-four meeting minutes.
Uh, we need to add July. And four as well.
Yep. The special one.
Okay, so we're looking for the approval of the July tenth and also July twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four meeting minutes.
I can make a motion to approve one of them, but I was not at the second one.
Okay.
So if you want me to, nah, then I won't. Just wait.
I wasn't in one of them either, so I wasn't. So I'll start with the tenth and then I'll move to twenty-four.
Okay, I made a motion to approve the minutes from the July tenth.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
So I'm assuming ties.
Second.
Yes.
And the July twenty-fourth meeting?
And I make a motion to accept the minutes from the July twenty-fourth meeting.
Um, is there a second?
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried? Good. All right. Mayor's report, we're still waiting for the fast New York grant. We're hoping to have a decision made by the state by now. We're hoping by August first to have had that. They still haven't notified us. That's got to do with the grant. For the substation upgrade for the Oxbow, extra load to feed the park. We're still waiting to hear that, so I'm hoping any day we hear that. I did contact Genesee County Economic Development and asked if they had heard anything, and they said no, they're also waiting to hear, and they felt that we would probably hear before they did, but they're saying these things sometimes take some time, but we're sure hoping to get that grant to offset the overall cost of this substation upgrade. Uh, the consolidated funding application, CFA, the park grant was submitted by Labella Associates. I know Courtney and Renee dealt with Mike Coquelin from Labella, and he's done great work in the past for us, and he did great work on submitting this grant for us. They wrote the grant, they submitted the grant, it was paid for by the Genesee County Legislature, the money that they allocated to all the municipalities. They gave all municipalities five thousand dollars for a grant writer, so it didn't cost the village any money, and we took advantage of that, first come, first served, and again, we had them submit that for us. So we won't hear for that until probably January, if we should get that park grant, so we're hopeful for that one also. The other grant, clean energy, community grant that's through NYSERTA, they've awarded us ten thousand dollars, and that's to be used for a car charging station that will install in the back parking lot back here to replace the failing unit that's back there now. We had one at the park also that failed, we couldn't get parts for them anymore. The one out back now, it's only half of it is operable.
Nothing back at the park though, right?
No.
Good.
So we're waiting for the representative to come out. He's also gonna be installing one at the town, at Robbinsburg, I believe.
Potentially.
Potentially. And when he comes out to look at that site, he'll be looking at our site to see exactly.
These new ones, Joe, they're got a slot where you have to put a credit card in in order to function them.
Yes.
Right, Courtney?
Yes.
We're not giving away free juice anymore.
Well, this one does too.
Right.
Yeah, has the slot to do that.
Okay.
But the new ones usually have an app that you connect to and pay through the app.
How do you do the village card? I mean, you just?
We just plug it in back there.
Okay, you don't have to swipe the card?
Well, if we get a new one, then we're gonna have to pay just like everybody else.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Yeah. See, my solution, we've been talking about it a little bit. This car is, it was a point nineteen. So small, but we're talking about, you know, through the power authority, we can get financing in, in, inexpensive, so we can trade this one in for a smaller SUV that's a hybrid. So it's definitely, so it won't be a plug-in hybrid, it'll just be a hybrid, and then we'll have to plug it in anymore.
Yep, good idea.
Okay, uh, we got another concert coming up in Hickory Park. Monday, August nineteenth, so it's coming up, you know, around the corner.
What?
And that's at six thirty.
Was there one last?
That's a Sunday?
No, it's a Monday.
Oh, Monday, okay, I cut the grass that morning.
Something was happening Monday, we could hear the music, but it didn't happen.
Not this week.
No, we had one last week, week before.
Wednesday, I believe, wasn't it, the last one?
There was something on Monday night, I could hear music somewhere.
Yeah, we had a good crowd for that concert. Very well attended, so, and there's two left, like I said, the one Monday, August nineteenth, and then there's another one, and at the end of August, August twenty-eighth, I believe, yeah. So we're utilizing the park very well, and it's, it's.
Jamming, there ain't no, there's all kinds of people over there at the plant around.
That's what we want. Okay, uh, I could say the Rose Garden qualified by far for a, to be on the New York State Historic Business Registry. The requirement was to be in business for fifty years, and they're at seventy years now, so that's quite the feat, to say, you know, the family business there for seventy years here in the village, so I, I said, it's pretty remarkable.
What does that allow them then?
Uh, they just get, get on a state registry, just for businesses, just, just to recognize them, I mean, I think probably Assemblyman Holly will come here and present them with some kind of certification.
Nice.
It's on the agenda, we're gonna be talking about a piece, another parcel of land over on Gibson Place, so I'll, I'll put that up until we get to our new business to discuss that. Sidewalk replacements, we've hired Pro Construction to replace the broken tiles around the village. I don't know if they've given us a start date yet, I see they're up at the school working right now, so I would think when they get done with the school job there, they'll be down here. And we applied to the New York Power Authority to increase our allotment of preference power for economic, economic development with the additional load of the Oxbow plant being built, and they awarded us, the trustees of NIPA awarded us an extra two point five five megawatts of preference power, and that'll go along with our current two point four four megawatts. And like I wrote on here, the, this preference power is some of the cheapest power in the whole United States, you know, so we're grateful that we submitted an application and they awarded us that extra preference power.
And this goes along with the power that we get now?
Yes.
Yeah, it's a really big link to the village. We've been fighting for more higher power for years, so pretty awesome that we finally got it.
Wow.
You, you need to jump on this before they even start building, because once they start building, you no longer qualify to even, you know, go for the, you know, you can't even apply. So it's, it's important that, you know, we're ahead of the game and submitted the application and we were awarded, so it's gonna help our red piers down the road immensely. Our village crew, our electric crew is gonna be supplying labor and equipment to the town. They're planning on constructing a pole line from power off of two sixty-two back to the pavilion that they put in, and they've asked us if we would provide the mutual aid to the town, so our guys will be setting the poles and, you know, stringing the wire. Our lineman, Nick, is working up a cost estimate, so taking it out, you know, we'll be paying for all the materials, and we'll just provide mutual aid. It's nice working with them, they work with us real well, have for a lot of years, so we'll help them by constructing that pole line for them. And the other thing is, with all the new building activity going on up in nineteen and thirty-three, we felt that it was a good time to maybe go back and address the speed limit through that area, right now it's fifty-five, through that whole area, and to me, it's insane. With the additional jobs that Oxbow's gonna create, along with the hundred and sixty that are already there, Dollar General's going in there, I don't know, there's a couple other little things that might be going on up at that end, it's gonna increase a lot of traffic, so we're thinking maybe readdressing that and seeing if the DOT will see about lowering the speed limit.
That would be awesome, and that whole, like, that whole area up there?
Yeah.
That would solve a lot of problems why I'm here. I'm here for speed, I can't tolerate it anymore.
There, we contacted Assemblyman, I contacted Assemblyman Holly's office and got him involved and told him the situation, and they told me to have the town take the lead on this because it, it is in the town, so I got ahold of the supervisor, Ernie Haywood, and he's going to bring it up for a proposition at their county meeting, and then send that to, to the DOT and also to Steve Holly's office, and then we'll follow up to sending something to Steve Holly, saying that you weren't in favor of this reduced speed limit up at that area, just for safety reasons, so we're working on that now. That's all I got, Courtney?
I talked with the, the Dollar General, it got turned down, it wasn't that good?
No, it's going.
They told them they needed to redesign it, so that it looked more conducive to the.
The new design is quite to the area.
Quite nice. Yeah, they didn't want it to be a boxy thing like the one at Byron and Churchville, so that's, that's where that went.
Oh, nice.
So it is being built.
So is Quikley still in the, in the mix?
They're still on hold.
Okay.
Yeah, they're still on hold.
Cause that's gonna, I mean, if they put something there, I mean, you come off that expressway, you got people coming out of a gas station, oh, oh my God, that's gonna be a disaster.
That's, that's one of the ones I was talking about, a couple other things possibly going on up there.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, people fly out that expressway, and I tell you, they don't even look to see.
Right.
I mean, it used to be two lanes, when I worked at Kodak for years, it was emerging lane, now there is an emerging lane, so you gotta stop, and if somebody's coming, I mean, you're obligated to stop, but people don't. I'm coming from RIT and they, right in front of you, boom.
Yep.
And it's, I tell everybody, it's so dangerous up there, they come off the expressway, there's signals on, and then the signal doesn't shut off, I mean, you think they're turning around the apple tree and they shoot by.
Yeah.
It's so dangerous.
Almost got a cloud in behind coming up the expressway, turning on a Buffalo Road there.
Oh, yeah?
You know, people are coming over the bridge and.
Yeah, yeah.
Sounds like my problems are minimal.
Well, this good problem is a problem everywhere, and every community has these, has the issue.
I think we just need one more speed limit sign. When they come off Apple Tree, they don't see a speed limit sign until they Brett's, until they go to Brett's. When they come off Apple Tree, if they ignore that sign on Apple Tree, now here they are looking at nineteen, they fly by my house until they get to the thirty mile an hour sign that's down there by Brett. We don't have one in that little area, it's up by the restaurant or the old restaurant.
Yeah. You talking on nineteen or on Apple?
Nineteen.
Yeah.
See, that's nineteen the state road, and where the village is not allowed to put speed signs.
I can put one in my front yard, can't I? What are they gonna say to me?
You can drive it.
Oh, what do I care? I don't care if they come over, I can just see it now. My property, why can't I have a sign in there? It's thirty miles an hour, come on, not fifty-five, you seen the report I gave you, everybody's speeds, there's nobody going under forty. Can't do nothing about it cause it's the state? Can I start throwing eggs at people?
You, you have to put, get a permit to put the sign, you know, posted sign and that and FBS, it can't be within like two hundred feet of another sign.
Oh, God.
There's all kinds of.
Oh, man.
Motion regulations.
Rules and regulations for this stuff.
It's just ridiculous, huh?
So years ago, when Joe was the superintendent? DVW supervisor, all the stop signs like on Rochester and Buffalo and whatever, they're getting old and not as bright and noticeable, so I think Joey, and so he had other guys going to put all brand new ones in.
Yeah.
The state saw that we put brand new ones in, took them all down, and put their own back up, and put ours up at the DVW because we're not allowed to put signs up, even though they were, they met standards, they.
Even in your neighborhoods here, your own little village neighborhoods, you can't?
Well, if it's, if it's off of nineteen, if it's this traffic stop or device off of nineteen or state road, then it's theirs, within a certain footage of the road.
We could put one near the end of the apple tree, when you come to the stop, you know, before there.
Yeah, there's one on Apple Tree.
Oh, there is one, okay.
Which when you make that turn, there isn't any until all the way down by Brett's, and that's where people are speeding, they come around here, guys, I watch them, they see you make the turn, they see you get on the throttle, and they slow down, they hit the brake lights, and they go down to Brett's when they see thirty. They don't know it's thirty right there, especially Saturday going to the rest. The rest trips, you can count them, they'll be back in forty-five minutes. Everybody that's going that way will be back going this way forty-five minutes.
Yeah, I kinda disagree with one point, is that I do think they know that it's thirty. I think everybody knows, I mean, you, you know, I used to live down here on the other side of, and people fly through there, there's plenty of signs that say thirty, and then there's plenty of signs on Buffalo Road that say thirty, you know, and there's on, and two sixty-two that says thirty, and nobody slows down for anything.
Nobody cares.
They need, you know, it just needs to be tickets, 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 tickets.
Yeah, why don't we write tickets, why are the cops, have we gotta grease them?
I did see the state trooper here the other day, had some pull over on nineteen, I said good, you know?
They can't do, we should be known as the speed trap town of the state.
That's what I told them, we sat down with them, that's what I told them, write them up.
Write them up?
I said.
What are you crazy, you know how much cash I miss in that?
I don't want warnings, I want tickets written.
We'll be the Caladonia of Genesee County.
Yeah.
You know what, Caladonia? Caladonia's not as bad as it used to be.
No, it's true.
Not even close. And Stafford's actually not as bad as it used to be either.
We do pay the sheriff's department extra money for extra controls, however, they're seven or eight men short of full capacity, and they can't get qualified candidates, so they have a hard enough time just covering what they've got, and they've got, you know, big problems rotating and around and.
I don't see too many people wanting to be a policeman these days, you know, they got kind of a raw deal.
So it's, it's kind of a bad situation all there.
So we're pretty much true.
We can't self-enforce anything.
You're investing spike strips, start rolling.
I thought about, I thought about rolling a basketball.
When I was a kid, when I was a kid, maybe.
I thought about throwing a camera. See what they do?
When I was a kid, I know, they used to have like magistrates, they had one of the guys that was like a post office fellow, he could stop people, so.
That's what that one policeman told me.
Yeah.
That one policeman said, the code enforcement officer has more power than you know around here, that's what he told me, that cop, the state cop that was up there, when they're flying by, I want to talk to him in the driveway, and they go, how do you like that? He goes, I go, can't you guys do anything? He said, your code enforcement officer has more power over this than I.
He's got a leg in his car.
I don't understand that. He said, the code enforcement officer has power to detain us a little bit, I don't know how.
Especially when you can't like, you're not gonna pull somebody over and.
Yeah, what are you doing? Stop, slow down.
Let alone even have that radar that's calibrated regularly.
Yeah.
And on top of that, so the one, I mean, this is separate from that, the only thing that we can do is, therefore does have the authority to point somebody to write tickets for parking issues.
That's not the issue.
That's not a problem, we do have, we do have some problem with when I park me here or there, but.
What if I just park some of my cars on each side of nineteen and clog it up a little, maybe it'll just slow down based on, maybe they'll think.
We don't have any paint left on your doors.
Hold on, what if I have some blow-up cars? Blow-up cop cars? A blow-up policeman?
Tank, blow-up tank.
Tank, all right, I get rid of them in the meeting, so there's nothing we can do about that.
You don't like speed bumps, right?
We have to rely on the troopers and the sheriff's department to come out and write tickets.
Now, I work in Rochester, I come up J Street to come to our building, J Street's dead, but there's speed bumps on there, they're the wider kind, that they're more like a hump.
Yeah, you guys can't even do that in your own neighborhood, it's no speed bumps.
It does slow people down, I mean, I don't know.
Can you put them in?
We had them.
I, I don't wanna put them in.
You don't like it?
Force people to slow down, as soon as they roll over, they're right on the gas like a drag strip pulling away from them.
Well, and then they were going up, they were going around them, they were going around.
They went right in front of my house on Rochester, that all the way.
Yeah, where there's no curbing.
They were driving up into the parkway between the sidewalk and the street, they were on them, they'd worn my neighbor's grass right down to dirt.
Yep.
All right. I gotta think about this. I gotta go to Byron.
Thank you for your work. Man.
It's, it's a frustrating topic, you know, it's just, we wanna, you know, do something, but we have to rely on.
These sport bikes that are racing around the village.
The sheriffs have major problems, you know, to deal with, and they don't have enough men to take care of those things and call here and get the right tickets, and like Joe said before, the money that we pay for extra coverage is overtime, so they have to have somebody who's willing and wants to take the overtime.
Younger guys don't wanna work overtime.
I would think they'd wanna work overtime for something like this, this would be like easy overtime.
That's the thing with the younger generation, they don't, they only wanna put the minimum of their forty hours in and call it good, they don't, nobody's dedicated to, you know.
It's a tough one.
The money's there, all you have to do is sign up for their overtime.
Yeah, and they haven't used it the last two, three years, not much at all.
But again, they're short, short of staff, and then they get concerts going on in Darian Lake, so the guys all go there.
That's a priority.
I did stop the guys on motorcycles, they were ripping up the streets, and I, I came, left my house, came right back here in the back of the.
I don't know if you heard about the ones, Saturday night or Sunday night, I, I hear these guys, they race out of Monroe County on four ninety, and they get off in Bergen, and then they loop around, and then they go back, well, that particular night, they decided to come on, I heard them come down Buffalo Road, turn on the Rochester Street, they went by my house so fast to that thing, their registers to speed, they didn't even, they didn't even pick it up. They hadn't been going over a hundred miles an hour going by my house heading into the village.
I've heard complaints about them.
Yeah, and I guarantee you, those aren't locals.
Yeah.
And tires squealing too, I hear, I hear that a lot.
They burned down in front of my house a week ago or so, two thirty in the morning.
And just a, a way of reference for JR, so JR has radar detector, and he was a scientist, and so he has the ability to calibrate and all that stuff, so he's been sitting out on his yard.
Where does he live? About Lake.
About, yeah, I've come a few houses up, almost across from Barron's.
Does he move for the village?
Yeah.
That's so strange, Rob ran into him today, called me on the phone, said I met this gentleman today one, did he work for the ladies or not, correct?
Yes. So he, he's, he's sitting there taking radar readings of cars going by, so he's getting all these data points, and so he, he gave us a report of, you know, what he's finding, so that's what he was referring to, so he actually has the data to back up what he's saying, and so he knows what speed is, and he's, you know, he wanted to give back to the sheriff and the state to, you know, show the need of.
Where do we stand with the two extra speed detectors?
That's another DOT issue.
Okay, cause I know we had the two, and you can only put them someplace, but we ordered two more though.
Yeah, we, we have them.
Okay.
And now DOT told me, for they'll allow us to put those on Buffalo Road, we have to take the other two down here on Lake, on nineteen, because they're on wood poles, and they no longer allow them to be on wood poles.
But they have, the two things have nothing to do with it.
They gotta be two hundred feet away from something else too, right? And it gotta be two hundred.
Yeah, but they don't want them on the wood poles.
Oh, my God.
Okay, so contingent on putting those there is contingent you get rid of these, so.
So get rid of them or put them on a different kind of pole?
Well, you can't just put those on a different pole because those are hardwareed and off the power, where the other ones are solar powered, so we can, we could put those out.
Now, the newer ones that had different, there was different colors or something?
Yeah.
So they can put them on a highway, on a state road?
Yes.
Where the other ones could hammer. So now we're gonna have four of them, two that can go on streets, sit in village streets, and two that can go on highways.
They are, right, Hunter Street has one of them?
Uh, yeah, but they're on village streets, so we can, we can put those on without any issue, but now state roads, then they get involved, and you got them so far apart, and like I said, they, I want them on the wood poles, they're on a wood pole.
So what are you gonna, what do you put it on then if it's?
It's gotta be a metal pole, metal, I don't know why you'd want an extra pole. A wood pole's gonna be, it's a power utility.
Yeah, let's throw up some more poles.
Let's throw up another pole.
Yeah, exactly.
The state has to make everything way more difficult.
So I'll be honest, that's, that's what's holding me up here.
So that's still in the works though, right?
Yeah. I don't know if we can say, well, give us a year or something to replace the other two because they're not an easy solar power.
Yeah.
We can just put them on poles and, you'd have to run and draw wiring to them.
Yeah, I see that, but.
See, technically, yeah.
Last little backup on the, like.
Yeah.
Just put them outside the street?
Yeah.
I'd like to get them up on Buffalo Road, but the guy who's supposed to be retiring, so.
I gotta worry about that.
Are they really, do they really, I imagine they help, but do you have some kind of evidence showing that they help?
Well, I, I think they help.
I think they help, even when I look.
Yeah, me too, that's what I'm saying, from my experience, they do, but.
Buffalo Street?
Is the problem with getting other solar ones a budget issue?
No, we, we actually have them.
We already bought them.
We had them, and I wanted to put them up.
But you mean, you take these down, then you'd have to get two more solar?
Yes, yes.
And so should we just do that?
Well, they, you know, they cost money too, so you would, you know, we'd have to budget like a year out to say, okay, give, I'm hoping I can tell the DOT, give us a year and we can, okay.
Be tough, tough to justify, cause we just bought two and we haven't put them up yet, so, you know, you'd hate to have six of them.
But if we aren't getting police officers and they do help slow it down?
Yeah.
Then can we use some of the police officer money that they're not utilizing to buy signs?
The, the two that we had, we did put those two up, so we only have two right now that aren't put up.
Right, but when, if you had to take those down and put them on different poles, you're basically gonna have them, you know, you're gonna have, if you buy two more, you're gonna have six.
Yeah.
So, but, yeah, that's.
I don't hope they let us use these though, but, but like I say, you gotta go, you're gonna have to have underground electric going to them to get to the new pole, you know, metal pole, cause right now it's coming right off the pole, which is perfect.
Yeah.
Power's right there up, you know, on top.
And you're giving Churchville a hard time about theirs, there's some on right on a pole.
I know, everywhere you go, you see them on.
Do we have one or would we get one on Parkview? Is that a village street?
Yeah.
So could you put one of the ones from the pole that's here that has to come down onto a pole on Parkview? And then they can't say anything about you putting it on a pole, and then you reuse it? And then?
Well, you have to run wire to it somehow. You gotta power it. Cause it's not solar, right, the ones you're gonna.
On a pole?
Yeah, well, those aren't our poles. Those were National Great Poles on, going all the way down.
I'm just trying to brainstorm.
Yeah, I know.
People slide on that Parkview too.
Oh, I know.
Oh, yeah. It's, it's supposed to be thirty.
Yeah. Especially once you get past the park entrance.
Yeah, oh yeah, yeah.
That's behind my house, so I see, I see it all the time.
Yeah.
And I'm, and I'm guilty too because you don't think of it. There's nothing there. It's just a field. I'm not going easy down there, but I'm definitely.
So what happens if you leave them on the wood poles? What are they gonna do?
I, I don't know.
Well, then just leave them. So I would say, you know, unless they come and slap your hand and force you to take them down.
That's what I'm trying to get, go about it the right way and go to them and say, hey, I wanna put two not beyond Buffalo Road and unload you. You know, that's contingent on you taking those ones off to a pole.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's an all in, you know? Okay.
I'll work on it.
Alright, my report, y'all have it in front of you. I'm sure you, you've read it already. Couple things I wanna add. Saw in there that, um, there is the, um, National Northern Borders Regional Council Catalyst Grant. So that was, that's, that's a federal grant and it's up to a million dollars that we could be awarded for the substation. The grant, uh, actually, uh, it could be up to three million dollars, but we missed some of the, couple of the criteria that get us up there, which one of them is, um, project having, uh, paving multiple communities. So we can only apply for up to a million. Power Authority feels like we have a strong, um, case for that. But, uh, the, because we only got, we, we can only do up to a million. They've identified another grant we can apply for, um, through NYSERTA for two hundred thousand dollars. And that grant is non-competitive. It's not, uh, non-matching. And it's for, only for communities and co-ops. So it's really, really tailing towards us. So that's a, a good, good possibility too. So I am working on both of those, um, with the Power Authority. The other thing is, I mentioned this a few weeks ago. There's, uh, the town has an intern from Cornell, uh, through Cornell, uh, cooperative extension. Uh, he's an engineering student at, um, RIT. Uh, so he's going through all the town roads and, um, grading them. And so since they were here and they had him, they have him do the build roads too. So, uh, he's been working on that and we met today. He was, he's, uh, some information. So next meeting, he'd like to come in and give us a report to the board.
I'll need him.
Um, so it'll, um, should, uh, give us an idea of what shit the roads are in, which ones, uh, are, um, more important to take, take care of, um, and projections of cost and other recommendations. So, um, that'll be at the next meeting.
Good.
So I have this, is this really, this is not his full report. It's kind of a, um, partial town, partial village report. So this is a preliminary, but you can look at it if you're interested in, uh, in, but he'll be here, um, since September. So besides that, anybody have any questions on my report? The digger Derek and the sewer jetter are on, up for auction and tomorrow's their last day. The digger is not doing well. It's really doing poorly. Um, it was only up to about seven thousand dollars today.
What was your hope?
Um, twenty.
Oh.
Yeah. We don't have to sell it.
Yeah, we don't have to. I just, normally, when you put something like that, anytime you put equipment on this website, it goes for more than you'd get anywhere else. And that's what worries me. If you take it, if you don't take it and you try to sell it somewhere else, are we going to do better?
How often is the auction?
Uh, every time we want to. So it's, it's.
So it's up to every time?
That's really low for that digger.
It is, but it's a very specialty piece of equipment that, you know.
Are there better or worse times for, for municipalities or anyone else who might buy a piece of equipment like that to, to buy it?
Kind of depends on the equipment really, I would think.
Well, the, the digger Derek, yeah, I wouldn't, I would, like mower maybe or, you know, something like that.
But plow or something would be more bullish, right?
But this, I, I don't, I don't think so.
It's not seasonally better.
Right. So yeah, I don't know. So we'll have to wait tomorrow. Maybe something will happen and there'll be a race at the end. People will kind of go after it. Somebody I was supposed to come look at today. Um, so can only hope that there's a big push. But if we take it to somewhere else, um, other auctions, this auction doesn't charge us anything for it to put it up there. You know, they don't take any commission out of us. Um, so if you take it somewhere else, you know, they might take a ten or twenty percent. Be it, uh, money you gain. So you have to keep that in mind too. Uh, we're gonna have to have something, a number in mind, um, come Thursday night, um, Friday morning, um, whether we wanna take that amount.
So when the auction ends, you have the option of going in to say yes or no?
We can turn it down and then the, um, the person who wants it can come back and offer something more. And then after that, we can still say no. We did that with, um, the old, one of the old pickup trucks. We had a, I think we had a, the old, we had a hybrid Chevy maybe that they got rid of or maybe the last Ford. Yeah, it was the last Ford, uh, full-size, uh, corridor that we sold. It just didn't go with as much as we thought it was. So we had Brett sell it at auction. So yeah, it's doing good.
This is really low. We're with those trucks to go for now.
But on the opposite side of that, we have the sewer jetter in there in the auction at the same time. And that's a nineteen eighty-four sewer jetter that may or may not work and it's over, it's over a thousand dollars. So that was way more than we thought it would be. So I guess we'll wait and see. I, I like said, I, I would have expected more, a lot more. But, uh, it makes it especially type of piece of equipment. It's not like a bucket truck where, um, a, a tree person might want it to cut. Things with, uh, and I don't know what, with somebody besides a, an electric utility who would use it. So we'll see. Let's hope for the best.
Yeah.
What is a digger Derek?
It sets the poles, got the augers, augers a hole, picks up the pole and puts the pole in the ground, you know, the big power poles. And it's, uh, it's got a hoist on it too. You can lift heavy transformers to set them, you know, onto like a concrete pad or whatever, you can lift them. Or use it to unload, uh, loads of poles when you have them shipped in, uh, you need to unload the pole trailer.
What landscapes are like it? Or setting trees?
No, it's not good for that. They would use a bogcat for that with a mower, but.
Yeah, maybe if a construction person wanted to use it.
Bolt iron.
For making bolt irons. You know, make big, dig the holes for that and set the beams and trusses. But it's a big truck for that tool. And then they're using rolls and stuff like that now more.
Well, let's hope it, uh.
Yeah.
Comes up in the, in the end of the auction. Okay. And Gary's report. You got Gary's?
Yeah, I've got Gary's report there. Um, as you can see, a lot of this, a lot of the things have, uh, I don't remember last, last month's report is pretty full. Uh, we had a lot of things closed down. Uh, he has been dealing with a lot of issues, um, too many cars, mowing. The dealership at the, by the head of the, you know, Conti's there, nineteen thirty-three. Had started selling vehicles out in the grass. Um, so he talked about that. It's not allowed. So they pulled those back and put them in the parking lot. So there has been a lot of that, uh, issues he's been trying to resolve. And like I say, he closed out a lot of permits. There's no, two thousand and two permits I think there isn't anymore, which is good.
What's the horizon?
Uh, the cell tower, when they put anything on the cell tower, they had any ability to comment, so. The horizon equipment will put on there.
In time, we'll see if Gary gets, he's okay.
Yeah.
So we can address this mess.
Yeah.
You know, vehicles in the grass and the rocks. You know, that's dangerous. Okay. Send a motion to accept the officers' reports.
I'll make a motion to accept the officers' reports.
Your second.
My second, yeah.
All on paper?
Aye, aye.
Gary. Alright, trustee concerns. Where are the debts?
Um, mine were going to be about the, the squealing tires and speeding, which we've talked about. And also about getting out of Buffalo Road onto thirty-three, which we also had to talk about. It's, it's just gonna get harder and harder to get out of there. I, I come out of there and turn left and sometimes I'm sitting there for.
Okay, yeah.
That's Gary.
Okay, well.
Yeah, and so then, you know, you know, you wanna zoom out because you wanna go.
Yeah.
Then it's just kinda dangerous.
It is danger, very dangerous. Okay, well hopefully we'll, uh, some women in Holly's office will get involved in, uh, village and the town. Hopefully we can make a difference and get it all over. Okay. Uh, Todd, anything?
No, maybe we covered, and it, things that I was thinking about as well, when it's concerns.
Bob?
Yeah, the only thing I had was the, the new speed numbers and stuff with the status whatsoever. We already talked about that.
Okay. Okay, let's move on to new business. Uh, first thing on here is the Gibson Place land purchase. We know that we purchased that small parcel that, uh, was on the boundary of the list station. And, uh, this piece of, this piece of property now is on the other side and borders our substation. Uh, and if you remember, we signed a boundary agreement with the new owner over there because a part of our building is on this property. And the, uh, the boundary agreement stated that if we were ever to move that building, then we would have to get it off his property. Well, now it turns out, we need to set a pole even farther up for when we rebuild our substation for, for the upgrade. So I stopped at the gentleman's house that owns the property and had him set up a date to call Courtney. And Courtney and I went down and met with him and he is willing to sell that piece of property. Like I said, it's a, it's right up next to our substation. We've used it for all these years, thinking that was village property. Because we need it. It's, it's about as wide as this room here and we use it to drive our truck, our, uh, you know, our bucket trucks. So we can maintain the, the backend of the, uh, substation. So he is willing to sell this piece of property. And, uh, I asked him if he would be willing to take the same amount that we paid for basically the same size.
Across the street.
Across the street and, and he said, yeah, cause he, he told me he called the owner, the previous owner to see what, what he thought for that property.
Yeah.
And, uh, he's willing to take that, that amount of money right at the village, you know. And I really think we need to buy this piece of property because.
Four grand it was?
Forty-five hundred. Uh, we, you know, we can't even access our, our substation because it's his property. And I was wondering why he was parking a car back there. I was, I was village property, but it wasn't. It's his property. And I mean, he, technically, he could put a fence right along and block us from even getting along our substation. And there's not enough room on the south side of the station.
Does he do anything with that, Eric back there?
No.
So it probably doesn't mean much to him.
No.
We talked to him about it. Uh, so we, some, the, he's got two parcels and the parcel that we talked about is separate from the houses. So, uh, we've kinda cut that in half, take point two acres, just like the other side of the road. But, you know, besides the part that's on, that's by the substation and, and that turnaround area, I mean, it's just, uh, treason swamp. So it's not, he would never use it for anything. So it would be, yeah, it'd be easy. So, um, we would, uh, get it surveyed and, uh, and so, and subdivide it in a survey and then come to the planning board. And the planning board would approve it. It'd take a couple of meetings. Then after that, we'd go forward with sale, buy the property and then, um, then it'd be ours.
Does he, he paying for the survey?
And we would have to pay for all that stuff.
He or us?
We would be, we would.
We would.
The survey and, uh, closing costs.
Do we know how much that's gonna run for a survey?
At home.
Okay.
I know, it's, it's almost, I think a point two acres is gonna cost four or five grand plus the survey, plus legal fees, plus whatever, right? But that's what it is.
Is it possible? I know when we did the last one, you had a nice map drawn out with the street and then the parcel that we recently purchased. I wonder if you could do the same thing with that and, you know, where he owns and where it would be subdivided and what we would own. Is that, is something we could do?
I think it would be clearer. I think I'm not.
Are we going there tonight?
You'll see it tonight.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. So.
Okay. We can table that till the next meeting? That way you can look at it and you get a visual.
Sure.
You know, what, what's involved and why we need it.
Yep.
Okay.
I mean, you have time for that, right? That's not pressuring you too much on that.
No, I, it's nothing that's, you know.
You can wait another month for sure.
Is the other parcel all said and done? That we purchased?
Yeah. Yeah, it will, it'll take, you can, time the board approves and us, I don't know how long it'll take the survey to get done. Two months for the planning board, quite a long month for closing. So it would, it's gonna take, you know, tell me six months to get.
And another public hearing, right?
You don't need a public hearing for this?
Okay, cause we did on the other one, right?
Right, we did on the other one, but, um, there was some back and forth within the attorneys. If the person was cost over twenty thousand, we needed a public hearing.
Okay.
So we really didn't need it for the forty-five hundred, but our attorney said we needed it, but then after they went back and forth with their legal, the, uh, real estate department, they're like, no, you don't need it for a hundred points. So, but, you know, it never hurts to have a public hearing event.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Okay, uh, as far as touring the electric facilities, as I said earlier, I think we can just go there after we close the meeting. That way we don't have to just come back here and sit down and say a motion to close.
Yeah.
We'll know what tour the electric facilities. And under old business, uh, the Tully Building painting, Courtney, what do you got? Two quotes?
So I have the same two quotes as I did last month. I received a list from, um, Sherwin-Williams, but it was only two people. Uh, I called the one. They said they're too busy. They're not taking any more outside painting for this year. And then the other one I called and they were supposed to come on Friday, last Friday. And they did, they no showed, no called. They just didn't show up and haven't had a heard from. So I don't know what happened. There's another person who came in about, uh, two weeks ago. Somebody who, uh, Mike Fleming knows and, um, he came and looked at it and said, give me a quote and he never gave me one.
Didn't you already get two quotes?
I have two.
Okay, the two that we looked at last time.
So that's where we are. I'm having a hard time getting people to, uh, get quotes from.
Does Brian Reed still do painting?
As far as I know. I don't know. He, he paints for Thompson Builds, I believe. Contracts through them. Would you rather try to get one, one more quote?
I, yeah, I think so.
Okay.
I don't know if you tried the Schmellick out of Otavia?
Uh, he's not, yeah, I don't know that.
Okay, there you go. Longtime painter, so Otavia Schmellicks, they, he was invited.
Okay.
About Schmellick. I'll have to.
Yeah, I feel like I can't spell that.
My wife is the Polish person will tell you how to spell that.
Now, the other two quotes that you got were reasonably close to each other.
Yes, they're both about seventy-nine hundred.
And that's for painting and some detail work?
Yes, yeah.
And do we have a color scheme that we have to work with?
No.
From the historical?
Palette, historical palette, probably.
There's nothing that's like set in stone that we have to do, um, but we, we would do that.
Yeah.
And keep it in character with the rest of the buildings that were done nicely.
Don't want like lime green.
No. Or Santa Claus red.
Yeah. Yeah, really.
But we, they, we got a palette from, um, Sherwin-Williams that has multiple, you know, different options.
So you wouldn't just repaint it the color that it is right now?
Right.
I like that.
The, the brown?
Or brown, gray, whatever it is, charcoal, whatever.
One thing I'd like to bring up, okay, we'll, we'll get more quotes for that.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, before we close, I'd like to touch base on this, the road work that's planned. It's being, guys are doing the road repairs now, cutting out the holes, you know, potholes and filling with blacktop in preparation for the micro. and filling with blacktop in preparation for the micro paving, which is scheduled for the September sixteenth and seventeenth. It's, it's very tough to pinpoint a given day that they're actually gonna be here. Because if it rains, any time in between, it puts them a day behind schedule.
Project tag.
So I just want the trustees aware of what we're dealing with here. It's very tough. It's, it's so hard to, and you try to give the residents as much notice as you can, but you know, Todd, you know what happened last, last year. Maybe they heard the night before.
It was a disaster.
Putting knockers on people's doors, you know.
No, is this the oil and stone process?
No, this is micro paving.
They did Rochester Street last year. Okay.
Natural blacktop just in.
It's like a sealer with an aggregate in it. Oh, okay, okay.
So you can't drive on it for a few hours.
Okay.
Okay, but it's, it's a much nicer product than the stone.
Yeah.
And the stones, or you know, the dust and the chipped windshields and, and then the mess of trying to sweep it up. We had no sweeper. It's just, it's an inconvenience for a few hours, but in the long run, it's much, much better.
Yeah. Is this village-wide?
Two, what streets we got? Buffalo Street.
Buffalo Street, Clinton and Panthee.
Okay, so it's not us.
It's over the course of two days. Okay, not my backyard.
No, it's not my subject.
But it's, it's difficult when you do a whole, like Buffalo Street, because where's everybody?
Yeah, you're stuck.
But you're also cutting Richmond off too.
Yeah.
That's true.
So I just want the board aware of what we're dealing with here, okay? Because you may get some, you know, some feedback if things don't go quite right. But we'll do our best to notify every household that, you know.
How do you notify them?
Usually a mailer, you know, we mail. Or if we gotta go knocking on every, every resident's house for the flyer, then we'll have to do that, but it's, it's.
Could you put a, like you said, hang something on their door now and say, hey, it's coming up?
No, because you, because you can't give them a date. It, it could be a week, it could be a week after that. We get a week of rain, then now you're off a week. So we know until you really get close. We ended up on a date last time, and then they came like two, three days early.
That's even worse, really.
Yeah.
Because you're not ready for it.
Or we, we set a date and then it doesn't happen that day.
Before it turns back at night, you stop on people's doorknobs.
Yeah. I mean, I'd be happy to go out and help put things on people's doorknobs if it's useful. Before you think it's gonna happen, or whatever.
Well, we may have to do that also. And the trouble is, like last year, when they came around the night before, they were putting them on to say a front door, and the people didn't use their front door. They used their back door, so they never even saw them. They had to be out of there by eight o'clock in the morning.
So we would?
Put them on both doors, I guess.
Yeah, put them on both doors, order twice as many of them.
One, we can get a definite date. And it's over two days, and one of them would have one day and have the next.
Well, now we're gonna have to, it'll have to be later in the morning before they can start, because school buses.
I have to think about, well, September. Well, you're talking, you're talking the day that trash pickup is too.
Yeah.
Ouch.
I'm thinking of that licensing bag. Trash pickup, they won't be able to do it on those days.
Yeah.
Wow.
Is it just flyer that you, you just cut up pieces of paper to stick on the door?
Uh, they had.
Do you make those things, or do you put the door?
Well, that company's supposed to do it.
Oh.
And that was a problem, is they didn't tell us that they're coming early.
Yeah.
And we just got calls from people saying, I just found this thing on my door at eight o'clock at night, and it's tomorrow morning. And, you know, then we get a call like, wait, what? They didn't even tell us that they're doing it tomorrow.
Oh, geez.
And it was, it was.
Wonder where this gray hair comes from? So I just want to give you that to find out.
Oh, good. And it's kind of along those lines, since we're talking about doorknockers and stuff. We, so, we have a real, we have a real problem with communication with our residents. And we really, really try. With the sewer bills that we sent out this month, as you know, the debt charge went up twenty dollars. When that decision was made, a letter was sent out at that time, letting everybody know the reasonings and that we're in a public hearing tomorrow. So, you know, it was an individual mailer justed that information so everybody would know. This month, we sent out the bills with the increased charge. We've had almost two dozen people either call or stop in here to ask why the rates are going up. And we say, well, we put a slip of paper in, in with the bills that explained all that. Did you see it? And they said either, about half and halves, either said they didn't see it, or they saw and didn't read it.
Oh, great, yeah.
Right, so I've always had, I've always believed that nobody reads the newsletter. Or very few people read the newsletter. Years ago, when Anna was mayor, she allowed me to do a test. And in the middle of her mayor's message, I wrote, if you're reading this, come to the village office for free light bulbs.
Yeah.
Right, so we had four people show up to the village office. And it was one person who read it and three people that that person told. So.
We've always read the newsletter, but I might not have come from light bulbs. So maybe just people didn't come from light bulbs.
Right, I'm sure. I mean, I'm sure more than, you know, that, that people read it, but there's a small amount of people who are reading. So we are just trying to think of better, some, any way to communicate better and give this information now. Because we get pulled, pulled back from people saying, well, I didn't know this, and how can you do that? When we, we're trying our best. We do, we send out letters, we send out notes, we send, we put it on the Facebook, we put it on our website. And I mean, what, what more can we do to communicate?
It's up to them if they want to get involved. If they don't want to get involved, then they're gonna be surprised someday when they see something show up. I mean, it's just the way it is.
I hope so, I agree, but they still give us flyers.
I know.
And we still have to take it.
They must have auto payments on their electric bills, so they just don't forget it when it comes in?
Yeah, one or two.
I know, they have an auto payment, but I still look at it.
So I think we talked about it, and I would like to change the way we do the newsletter a little bit. Maybe do it quarterly. And in the off months, if something comes up, we can put other things in with it, in the electric bills. You know, we have, the, the, the BCA came up with a really nice calendar events for the summer. Could put that in there. You know, we have winter events coming up with the Oktoberfest and Truck or Tree and tree lighting.
Yeah.
Put those in a separate newsletter.
I like the newsletter.
We're struggling with that at Silver Lake, because we've always had newsletters, and then we have our directory every year. And now, a lot, a lot of my committee is saying, we don't want to do newsletters anymore because it's too pricey for postage, and this and that. And you have to find the people's winter address to get it to them if you want to send something mid-winter, you know, to keep everybody abreast of what's going on at Silver Lake. And so now they want to go totally electronic, you know. So it's all Facebook and website and all that stuff. The older people just don't, they don't know. They just don't, you know. Sally's doing a launch and lunch down there for veterans and stuff. They got flip phones, they don't know how to do anything on email. They don't, they just don't, you know. And they're, they're like, you need that newsletter so I can read it, you know. But everybody, they're fighting me tooth and nail. They're, oh, no, we have to do expensive, and, you know. So it's a changeover to where everything is starting to switch, you know. So it's hard to know what to do.
Yeah, it is, so.
And again, if it's on, if it's on email, they're not gonna read that either. Less likely, I think, to read it. I am less likely to read that email.
If I just, you read the newsletter, you know.
I like it.
I know, I know there's plenty of people who, who read it. I just don't know what percentage you really do. We get comments every once in a while about like historian, stories, things like that.
I'm usually looking at Joe's message and the historian's message.
I just want to make sure that we're thinking about different things.
Well, if you decide to put the doorknockers on or whatever, just order three per household, one on their car windshield, and one on their door.
Yeah.
Bound to get to them. They have a warning. I'm happy to help you put things on doors.
Well, you know, we're gonna tell the soup cook that does his job, you know, you give us a date, that's the date you have to show me, because that's the date that we're gonna put on people's home to let them know you're gonna be here this day. You can't.
There could be one rain date, right? If it's this date, or if it's raining that day, then it's this day. It's hard for them, right?